Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome y'all to the, everybody, to the May meeting of the Laconia Zoning Board of Adjustments. With that, I must read something, hopefully, maybe, the last time, but we'll see. Due to the COVID-19 crashes and according with Governor Sununu's Emergency Order Number 12 and Executive Order 2020-0 for this meeting is to be conducted electronically. The public has access to listen to and participate in this meeting by using the following link. It's HTTPS colon backslash backslash US zero two web dot zoom dot US backslash J backslash eight two seven five two 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 seven one nine five. Zoom meeting and entering the web ID, you must be using the Zoom app on an enabled device to participate in the meeting at the appropriate times. The web ID is eight two seven five two 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 seven one nine five. Listen only, call one six four six five five eight eight six five six or one three oh one seven one five eight five nine two. Using this option only allows you to listen to the meeting with no opportunity to participate. For problems, please call six oh three five two four three eight seven seven extension two four nine or email zoning@laconianh.gov. To view this meeting, YouTube under the City of Laconia, www.youtube.com/laconianh. Due to the technical difficulties, we are temporarily suspending live transmission of city meetings on channel 26. There are incompatibilities between Zoom virtual meeting platform and the Atlantic broadband platform. Live transmissions of city meetings on channel 26 will resume as soon as the COVID-19 emergency restrictions are lifted and in-person meetings are resumed. And there you have it. Now, uh, we can call the order?
I'll call the board.
I did that. Roll call.
Michael Foote.
Here.
Steve Bogart.
Here.
Roland Mayhew.
Here.
Gail Olber.
Here.
Michael Galvecki. He may be late. He did call. Marcia Hayward.
Here.
And Jane LaRoche. And no Jane.
So by all appearances, we have a quorum. We do have five members. Marcia, you will be a voting member tonight through all the applications, and then when Michael shows up, we'll make that transition. Okay?
Correct.
Okay. So, next on the agenda is the acceptance of the minutes from the previous meeting. Did everybody get a chance to review? And if so, are there any changes, additions, corrections, graphical pictures one would like to add? There being none, I'd like to entertain a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
Move to accept the minute. Oh, that's off. I'm sorry. Move to accept the minutes?
Second.
Discussion, there being none. Mike, how you, yep?
Yes, please.
Roland?
Yeah.
Gail?
Yes.
Marcia?
Yes.
Okay. So we move on. As soon as the motorcycle goes by. All right. Next on the agenda is our first item would be zero 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 five, variance 57 East We received a letter requesting a continuance to the June meeting, so if anybody's here for that me- meeting or application, it will be next month. Okay?
Just need a motion to continue.
I make a motion to continue until the June meeting?
Second.
Mike? You need the verbal. Roland?
Accept.
Yes.
Marcia?
Accept.
Steve accepts. Okay. Now we move on. Next on the agenda is, uh, zero 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 nine SE. It's a special exception for three two two North Street.
And Sarah should be on.
Applicant is requesting a special exception from Article 7, Section 235 dash 41A to allow the installation of detached accessory dwelling unit. If the applicant is here or on the Zoom.
Hi, I'm here.
Good evening. Welcome to.
Good evening.
And please tell us how we might help you.
So hello, my name is Sarah McNeil. I purchased the single-family three twenty-two North Street back in November of this year. And when I purchased the property, it was marketed as having an apartment. Um, it's a large single family and there's an apartment over the garage space. And as I was doing some digging and researching into the property and, you know, working with Karen and City Hall, we uncovered that it wasn't technically a legal accessory dwelling unit. So I wanted to make sure that I was compliant with it and make sure that it is properly classified. It's about 650 square feet over the garage space. And I live in the main part of the house. I have three kids that are, you know, college age that come from here from time to time, but I'm the primary, you know, owner that's living in the main house.
That was the amended application. I emailed you all.
Oh, you know, I printed it and I think it's on my printer.
I don't think it printed. We don't have it, a hard copy?
I got the email and I'm sorry, I forgot to print it. I mean, I did print it. I just forgot to take it off the printer. Mr. Chair, could I ask Karen a question?
Yes, you may.
Dean, whoever wants to jump up here. Accessory dwelling units that are detached from the main house, do those require a variance and a special exception? Or are we making an exception in this case?
No, this one is in the attached over the garage. The detached, as long as the property meets or exceeds the required lot size, they can be detached.
Okay. That's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
And is the lot size?
Yes, it's more than adequate. It's an, it's an oversized lot.
That's a big lot, Steve.
And this is the amended floor plan, if you want to take a look at that and then kind Six hundred and ninety-three square feet.
Highly technical drawing.
It's a one bedroom with a kitchen and a three-quarter bath and like a little sitting area.
Actually, that's an extra property.
And this is the way it exists as it is today?
Yes. And when I purchased the property, that's how it was too. So it is, you can access the property, you know, through the front porch, excuse me, access the ADU through the front porch. Um, and then there's a door that goes into like my part of the house, the main house. But it's part of the main house.
So it is attached?
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. You had said, I thought you had said detached, and that may be a mask that I didn't hear.
The amended is for the attached unit.
Okay. Oh, okay.
Right here.
It does say detached.
The original application was for detached when, and going through everything, we realized it was attached over the garage. We re-noticed the abutters so that, and then re-advertised with the attached unit.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions of the applicant at this time?
I do.
Yes.
Are there any other apartments in the main house?
No.
Down in the front of, when you look at the building and you, and you look in what would probably be a cellar if the house was around, but it's, it's open. There's no apartment down there?
No, the basement is unfinished and the house is probably about, I'd say eighty percent finished when we bought it. So we've been trying to, you know, hook up bathrooms, et cetera. There's a room down there that eventually, once finished, could be a bedroom. There's no kitchen in, in the basement. There is a bathroom, like a main basement area, and then a room that you could make a bedroom. But that, none of that is finished space. There's no kitchen or anything. It's, there's still like cement floors, um, drywells up, the ceiling isn't in.
Ms. McNeil, are you on city water or do you have your own water out there?
It's a well.
It's a well and you have storage or you have a septic?
Septic.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. And it's five years. It's a, it's a big lot.
It is a big lot. I, I just wanted to know.
Yeah, I guess it's a huge septic. I didn't even realize how big the septic was. I think the original builder might have had plans to do different things, but.
Well, they're usually based on the number of bedrooms you have when they actually build them, so, um, I, I was just curious as to where it is and whether or not you were hooked up with city, anything. Thank you.
No, private for both.
Could I continue?
Oh, I'm sorry.
When I, when I went up and took a look at your place, I met the people who were living up over the garage. And I may have been mistaken, but I can swear they told me that there were two apartments in the front of that building. That's why I'm asking the question.
No, Maggie and Xander are family friends of mine. They were staying over the garage. And there's no other apartment in the house. There's just the main house, which has the master on the first floor and two bedrooms up. The two bedrooms upstairs haven't even been completed. Down in the basement, there is an unfinished space. I have a girlfriend who is staying with me temporarily, like using the bedroom for a month or two because she's in a tough spot, but there's no apartment down there. And I actually had the, um, city come through shortly after I moved in and showed her the entire house, the appraiser from the city or the assessor. I forget what her name was, but.
That was Tara.
Okay. One minute. Yes, Dean?
So i- if I may, Mr. Chairman, as the applicant just noted, we, we did check with assessing, yesterday I believe it was. And assessing has, has very recently been in the building. They were the ones that took the measurement for us for the, for the ADU unit. And we did ask them specifically if they saw any additional units in the basement, and their answer was no. So we, we just found that, you know, we just confirmed that with assessing, uh, yesterday. And, and, because they were in the building very recently, a month or so, so.
Right.
As a part of your packet, you have the updated card from assessing that was updated as of April 1st, and it lists the basement as unfinished space.
And that half-story finished is the six ninety-three they're talking about on the assessing card?
Uh, let's see. Garage finished. Yeah, that would be the half-story finished. It's the, it's a portion of that. Well, you see the, see where it says half-story finished and it says six hundred ninety-three living area?
Mm-hmm.
That's, that's the unit.
That's the unit over the garage?
Yes.
Yeah.
Any other questions of the applicant at this time? There being none, I'd like to open it up to the public and ask if anybody from the public wishes to speak for or against this application. If you're in Zoom land, please wiggle your little raise your hand button, and that way the planning director would be able to identify you and activate you so you can speak. And if you're in the public in the audience, you can just, one at a time, rush the microphone and have a conversation. All indications are that no one wishes to speak for or the, or against this application. Just going to give it another second or two. Let the record indicate, no one from the public or in Zoom land wished to speak for or against this application. I'll bring it back to the board. Any other questions?
Do we care if it's, how they utilize it, whether it's DRPO or a short-term rental or anything like that, or is?
That's a different issue altogether. That's a whole different game.
All different game. All right. And then so.
That would be another mother may I, and since they have no five years' worth of rental information or anything like that, I doubt that it would be.
Perfect. I have an understanding of it now.
Perfectly good way, $150 bucks. With that being said.
I have nothing further.
Nothing further. Any closing comments from the applicant?
No, I think that, that should cover everything.
Okay. With that, I'm going to close it to the public from all input and bring it to the board for discussion.
I don't see a problem with it. I, I, unless someone else says something that triggers something else, I don't have a problem with this.
Marcia? You good? Mike?
Nope, I'm not seeing anything that's out of line.
Roland?
I'd better not say anything either.
Okay. Uh, all right. Like to entertain a motion?
I'll make the motion, but Roland, if you, you oppose this, just say so and why. You may change your mind.
Thank you, Roland.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we grant a special, um, a, a special exception for three twenty-two North Street, um, for an attached accessory apartment, and the use is authorized by special exception. There is no traffic out there, so presumably there will be no pedestrian safety or impact on that level. It will not, there is no public water drainage sewer system. She is on her own well and septic. It's what, six hundred and seventy-five square feet, so it is within the parameters. Uh, there will be no demand for fire, police, or schools presumably, hopefully. There are no special provisions that we need to satisfy in this. Uh, there is no hazard to the health, safety, or general welfare of the public, and it is not, the house itself is out of character with the neighborhood, but that is what it is. It was built there for that purpose. The location is appropriate, and it is consistent with the spirit and the intent of the, this chapter and the master plan to add housing wherever possible and wherever feasible and wherever practical, uh, to the City of Laconia.
We have a motion?
Hold second, Doc.
We have a second. Discussion of the motion. There being none, I'll call it. Marcia?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Roland?
Staying.
Okay.
Uh, yes, I support the motion. Yeah, I support the motion.
Steve, yes. So it passes four, zero, with one extension.
Thank you.
Next up is, uh, application, uh, zero zero one one SE, one thirty Mechanic Street. It's a special exception. Applicant is requesting a special exception from Article 7, Section 235 dash 41A to allow for the installation of an accessory dwelling unit. If the applicant is.
There she is.
Good evening.
What do you think? Can you hear me?
Yes. Are we talking to Stephanie?
Just me, yes.
Welcome to our meeting.
Hello.
How may we help you tonight?
Um, so I have a ADU, um, attached to my house. Um, when we bought the house in two thousand and eighteen, it was, um, halfway completed. The upstairs had a, um, a lot that had, with, um, it had a bathroom, it had wiring, it had, um, the plumbing and, and things like that. So we went and did, um, finished it off, um, with flooring and, and walls, and we added a kitchen. And, um, I did not realize until I went to go get it, um, appraised that I needed to get this approved through, um, the City of Laconia.
Did you do the building permits and stuff on the unit to get it, uh?
No, we did not.
Okay.
How long did it take you to complete the building?
Um, it was over about a year and a half. Um, we did a little bit out of, out of time. It was for my mother-in-law. Um, she lived in the Dominican Republic. We built it for when she came to stay for the summers, um, to help care for the, the kids here. Um, and unfortunately, she passed away a couple weeks ago, so that is not going to happen, but we, um, have somebody in there who is, um, staying temporarily while he works, um, on the Honda dealership in Tilton. So he will be there for a couple months.
And during that whole year and a half, no one ever mentioned anything to you about a building permits or any?
Um, the electrician that we had, um, um, he had mentioned it, um, to me. He added a couple of outlets. Um, but I was, it wasn't something that he said that we needed to really have, so I didn't go beyond and research it like I probably should have. Um, so those were done.
Now, the addition is actually bigger than the house, isn't it?
No. The addition on the house is a total of, um, is about a little under seven hundred square feet.
On the addition?
On the barn.
It's a two-story addition, isn't it?
It's a barn, it's a barn area. Um, it was, on the first floor, it has a, um, small kitchen and then an open space, um, for your couch and, and things like that. It has a little, um, bar island in the kitchen for seating. And then on, at the upstairs, it has, um, one bedroom, and it has an open space in the bathroom. Above the bathroom is where they had, um, a loft area, but we did not do anything with the loft area that's still there.
Thank you.
Now, um, I, I just want to ask you, you do understand that if we approve this, this is not approved for temporary living? That's, that's a whole different animal. This is a permanent apartment, and you cannot rent it in the short term.
It's a, it would need to be a permanent apartment?
It would be a permanent apartment. There's a whole different ordinance in our statutes for what we call, um, oh, God, I'm drawing a blank, temporary.
Short-term lodging.
Pardon?
Short-term lodging.
Short-term lodging.
Okay.
So, um, this is something that actually has to be rented. You could do it yourself, but you can't put this on Airbnb or with a realtor or with a, with a housing person and, and tell them you want to rent this for a couple of weeks. Um, this, this does have to be rented as an apartment for permanent dwelling, or, you know, I understand people with tenants will be tenants and they will move and they will do things like that, but this is not a short-term lodging situation. And what you described to us with a person staying there temporarily who works building the new Honda place in Tilton is that he or she is renting that temporarily while they're doing this work, but actually has a permanent domicile elsewhere. Is that correct?
I am, he said that he is selling his house in Maine. He's from Maine, and he wants to build here in Meredith. Um, so I'm not sure if he, he stays here all the time. Um, so I'm not sure if he has, um, a permanent house elsewhere as in that he lives. I know that he's, his house is on the market, uh, in Maine, so I'm, I'm not sure, um, if he owns or stays elsewhere when he leaves for a night or so. I'm not sure.
Thank you.
If, I can just offer some clarification. The ordinance for short-term lodging is anything fourteen days or less. If he's there a few months, it's outside the parameters of the short-term lodging.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Anybody else got any questions for the applicant at this time? With that, I'm going to open it up to the public and ask if anybody from the public wishes to speak for or against this application. If you're in Zoom land, please push your little hand button, raise your hand, and if you're here, you may come forward and speak at the podium. Let the record indicate, no one from Zoom land or from the public here in, in attendance wishes to speak for or against this application. Therefore, I'll bring it back to the board. Any further questions?
For the applicant or amongst?
Nope, for the applicant.
No.
Um, no, no other questions.
Oh, I don't have any more questions for the applicant. No, thank you.
Marcie?
No.
Marcia?
No questions.
All right. Does the applicant have any closing comments?
Um, no, I'm just, um, learning and trying to figure this out. This is my first home, so I'm just, um, trying to do it, um, right.
Okay. Thank you. With that, we're going to close it to the public and bring it to the board for discussion.
I would think that it would have to go and post-pay the permits.
Yeah, I was going to, I was going to say that. Yeah, she's got to go through the permitting process and all the inspection process.
Right.
Which if, if we, if we decide, in my opinion, if, if I decide to agree to this, that those conditions are going to be put on that, and that includes all the safety inspections, Fire Department, Police Department, whoever does safety inspections are going to have to do. Um, I Um, I do understand a first-time homeowner. Um, I.
It would be an after-the-fact building permit, which would trigger the appropriate inspections.
Right. Um, but, yeah, I mean, I'm obviously not happy like you guys are that this all went forward without, you know, proper permitting, but I can't unring that bell.
I'm just surprised it went almost two years without being picked up.
I'm not.
On Mechanic Street, I'm not.
I'm not. You know, I'm not. That does, nothing, nothing surprises me. I, I'm, I'm not. I, you know.
In my time here on the zoning board, I've seen more houses from Mechanic Street sold by the real estate market that have converted rooms in them all the time. And they, they market it that way and because their hands are washed of it and the unsuspecting people find out after the fact that it wasn't ever properly done. You know, so. The shame should be put in the appropriate place.
Yeah. Mr., Mr. Chair, I have a question for, um, the zoning people or the planning people. I drove by this place. I had a hard time counting driveway spaces. She needs a minimum of three and a half, or three spaces, correct? She needs one and a half spaces for each dwelling unit.
And I just realized I left my.
And I'm curious to know if any of you looked at this as to how many parking spaces that she has. Those are tight quarters.
Yes.
Through Mechanic Street. So if there's a concern I have, it's parking.
There is four parking spaces.
You can get four cars in there? Two per, two per dwelling? Okay. All right, thank you. I forgot to ask you that, and I, I apologize for thinking of that after the fact. I had made a note to ask, and I'm sorry about that.
And the driveway measures adequately for our nine-by-nineteen spaces for four.
Okay, thank you. And, and she only needs three?
Correct.
Okay. Any other discussion? There being none, I'd like to entertain a motion.
Make a motion that we accept this, um, application Z zero, two zero two one dash zero zero one one, one thirty Mechanic Street. We're looking for a special exception here for an ADU. This, uh, ADU is acceptable with a special exception. Should not create any undue traffic or pedestrian sa- safety issues. Um, will not be an increased system for water and sewer being, as it's all connected through the main house. It means it won't have a separate service to it. And it should not create excessive demand for police fire protection schools. But every, every, I would point out that every additional unit or building does bring with it some weight for fire, and it's certainly reasonable that someone with a kid could live there, and it would impact the school. So in that there, my proviso.
I don't think it would significantly impact the school.
Not, not like you'd have ten of kids in there or anything. And it should not create any health or hazards to health, safety, and general welfare of the property. And the proposed location is appropriate because, like, where it has been a good mix of residential and commercial use. And in consistent with spirit and intent of the chapter master plan, it creates yet another, uh, living unit. I would say that the, um, acceptance of this special exception should be, uh, have the provisions that there's an after-the-fact, um, building permit that is submitted, and it complies with all safety, fire, and, um, building inspector permit inspections.
Okay, we have a motion.
I, I'm going to second that, but I, I want to, I'll, I'll second it for the purposes of, of the discussion. And I apologize for this coming in late. Um, that permitting has got a, we got to set a time limit on that permitting, because there's somebody in there.
So.
Um, I mean, I, uh, how much?
Thirty days.
Uh, what would be appropriate from the planning staff? I, I don't know, but I, I don't want this tendency to continue.
Planning director said thirty days.
Thirty days? You did. Okay, so all those permits have to be filed for and paid in full within thirty days? And either that or this exception is withdrawn.
Null and void.
Is null and void. And, and is that acceptable, Mike? It's your motion.
I can carry with that.
Okay.
And all issues, if any, I want to add to that, and all issues remain, uh, uh, with the permit, if there's any inspection issues and stuff like that. I'm not sure what the, the regular, cause someone is living there, what the time span is on that usually.
It's tough, because I, we don't know if there's second egresses. We don't know anything about this property because it hasn't been inspected. This is, this is why I'm, I, I, do you know what I would like? I would prefer to see the applicant come back once the permitting is done. But we can condition it on thirty days from today.
To apply for the permit, and then any issues with the permit need to be cleared up within sixty days of the issue. Is that normal?
Yeah, I mean, what would you recommend, Dean?
That puts it out three months already.
Yeah, that puts her out three months, and we've got somebody living there. I know, you know, I mean, that's.
Well, trying to get someone to fix something is.
I agree, yeah.
Is a little more difficult.
You're in the trades and I'm not, so I don't.
The guy who does stay here, he is a carpenter.
Oh, he doesn't.
And is licensed, so he could, if there is something, um, I'm, I'm sure I could hire him to, you know, do those things. And I do have an electrician if, if that needs me. I did, um, you know, so with those permits, I will, um, you know, make sure those things get done, and, and I want to get it done soon. So I will be in there as soon as I can be in there to file these and get this done.
If, in the course of doing inspections, if we find anything that is truly a, a life safety issue, then, you know, we would post the unit as uninhabitable until those issues are fixed. So I'm okay with the timeline, you know, if something drastic is found. I'm not anticipating that, but if something drastic is found, we, we could, you know, basically force an eviction and, until it's taken care of.
I'm, I'm comfortable with that, but I am concerned that someone's living there now. Um, that's.
And that would give a certificate of occupation.
Yep.
So basically, we're giving her thirty days to file and pay for the permits and thirty days to, um, to get an occupancy permit. Either that or she's going to have to come back here and ask for an extension. Is that acceptable, Mike? It's your motion.
You said something different than him, than Steve Bogart.
Okay.
Okay, you said thirty days, and then there were sixty days to.
Fix any issues.
Fix any issues.
That way it doesn't drag out for a year or something.
Okay, so what, what we have is thirty days to apply and pay for the permits and sixty days to get, from that time, to get an occupancy permit? Is that what you want to say?
Fix any issues if there's issues, because they should.
Well, the issues would have to be fixed before they get occupancy.
Are we wording that wrong?
No, you're good. You're good, we got it.
So for clarification, just so the minutes reflect this correctly, the motion to approve with the condition that the applicant apply for the app, the appropriate after-the-fact building permit, electrical permit, within thirty days. Additionally, if there's any issues found upon, with the inspections, that there's sixty days to correct said issues and gain a certificate of occupancy.
Right.
Okay, we can't condition that on occupancy permit? I mean, I'm saying an occupancy permit is just that. I mean, it's after the inspections, the, the fire department or the police department sign off on it. I mean, what, what I'm saying is, is rather than go through all that language or remediate issues and then get lost in the crosshairs, why don't we just condition that it has an occupancy permit? Within ninety days, sixty, uh, thirty days to pay for the licensing and, and the.
And then gain a certificate of occupancy.
And then, and an additional sixty days upon that to get a, an occupancy permit, or, or we revoke it.
It sounds more than reasonable.
Okay.
More than reasonable.
Okay.
All right.
I got it.
You got it?
Got it.
Okay, so I'm going to call the roll. Marcia?
Accept.
Michael?
Accept.
Roland?
Accept.
Gail?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Please follow up with the planning department for all your needs there, okay?
All right, thank you.
Okay. Next application is application, uh, zero zero one five of variance for six-four-five Union Ave. Applicant is requesting variance from Article, uh, eight, section two thirty-five dash forty-eight G two, design requirements landscaping to allow for the elimination of the interior landscaping area and the parking lot. Would the applicant please come forward, introduce yourself for the record, and tell us how we may help you?
Appreciate that. Good evening. My name's Tom Canton. I'm the owner of Canton Chevrolet and Canton Collision and Paint Center in, obviously in La Conia, on Union Avenue and Mechanic Street. Uh, with me is Tom Selling from Selling Engineering. We've been, as Dean can attest, we've been frequent flyers at the planning board meeting this year. Um, all but one. I'm sorry I missed that one, Dean. Heard it was.
Bet you were.
Heard it was a good one.
No.
Um, but we've had a bunch of projects going on here. And, uh, this is an expansion or in addition to one of our earlier projects. This is a employee parking lot that we're creating. It's an employee parking lot that joins Union Avenue back to Mechanic Street. Two different lots that join together. We're going to be utilizing them as, as one. On May fourth, we were, uh, granted by the planning department, phase two of our project of expanding our, the parking lot to make it a complete parking lot. There's a house on the, on the property now on the Union Avenue side. We're going to be taking that building down. We've been in front of the Heritage Commission and have permission from them. And, um, so we're going to be taking that building down in the middle of June. After we do so, we're going to complete the parking lot and make it into the one, into the one parking lot that will have as many as, uh, forty-two parking spaces. In that parking lot, where the two lots come together, we have the, the requirement from the planning department, the, um, condition was that we get zoning permission to eliminate in a, uh, grass island that would be in the middle of that parking lot. There's two ways I could approach this. I could approach it from the technical standpoint of we have two lots, and we don't necessarily meet the standard to have to ask for an exception because we don't have two one-hundred-and-fifty-foot strips of land. The, the, the rule is interior landscape areas, parking areas shall be designed so that no expansive pavement in a parking lot exceeds a hundred-and-fifty feet is measured perpendicular to any pavement edge. The two lots, as they come together, one section is a hundred-and-thirty-three feet, less than a hundred-and-fifty, the other one's ninety-nine feet. So, uh, so I could fall on the sword and say it's technically, uh, that I really don't need to get the permission, but that's not in the spirit of what I'd like to do. What I'd like to do is, to argue it is why it's better for the city and why it's better, why it's better for us. Taking the green space and putting it in the middle of the parking lot is going to take green space away from where I like to put it, is on the Union Avenue side. On the Union Avenue side, by putting more green space, which we, if you can picture it, it's right across the street from Roma Joe's. This is where it's, where it's going to be. I'm a frequent flyer there every morning, seven-thirty. If you want to get coffee, come see me. I'm there, like clockwork. But the green space on the Union Avenue side, if we put more grass there, we can put two trees, irrigation grass, along with the grass strip that's going to run the whole length of the property back to Mechanic Street. Once we get back to Mechanic Street on that second lot, we're also going to have two other green space islands with trees on each side of those. I, ironically, I, I came in front of the planning board, um, a couple of months ago for a street tree variance on another project that I, that I have, because it's a display lot, and I didn't want to have street trees there. I'm, I'm just the opposite on this one. I want more street trees on this one, because it's an employee parking lot. This parking lot will not be open to the public. It's going to be, as I said, it's going to be employee parking only. Uh, we may, uh, put cars on there temporarily from the collision center, which is right across the street. And by having the green space in the middle, it, it does two things. One is a, or once as I spoke, it takes green space away from Union Avenue where you can actually see it, and it's visually enhancing Union Avenue, but it also makes it more difficult for us to plow. And by plowing that, that straight strip, it allows us to get all the s- snow and ice and whatnot out of the way into consolidated piles. It's easier for us to sand. It makes it, uh, safer to, to walk on, because it's going to be cleaner. So in the, in this, I, I'm, I'm sure that, you know, the hundred-and-fifty-foot rule came about for a very good reason. Uh, I would argue that in the spirit of what we're trying to do, it doesn't apply. It's not, and this isn't a retail store. We're not going to have retail customers parking there. It's going to be, it's going to be us, uh, Canton Chevrolet employees, so Canton Collision Center employees, combination of the two. So, um, I'm asking for a variance, so we can move forward.
Um, I guess my only question, Mr. Canton, is, is why don't you merge the lots?
Why don't I what?
Why don't you merge those two lots, and then you don't have to get variances or anything?
Well, if I merge the lots, I would absolutely have to give the variance, because then I would have, uh,
Oh, yeah.
two hundred and some feet. Um, the technical reason, it's, it's super complicated the way I've, I've made this more complicated than need to, so.
Welcome to my world.
Yeah, geez, yeah. So when, when I, the house we've already knocked down, which is on Mechanic Street side, that was sixty Mechanic Street. I took that parking, that, that parcel of sixty Mechanic Street, and I merged it with the main parcel, which is six-twenty-three Union Ave. And that's with the ability that I can now expand the back of my truck center.
Yeah.
If I so choo- chose to do so. I, I don't have any plans to do that. Um, instead, we're going to expand the whole parking lot, give us more space, and, um, we're contemplating an expansion of another building on our property, which this parking lot will become that much more important for employees.
Okay. I, I just wanted to know.
Yeah, and it's.
It's actually, actually really my only question.
It's a good question. We've been, Dean can attest, we've been kind of going all around on this.
Well, he, he alluded that to me too, that, that this has been a long time in, in the planning and, um.
And it's all been, it's all been really good.
I know, and we're, we're grateful to have you there, and, um.
Yeah, appreciate that.
You know, we're grateful you're spending some money on your property. I just had to ask the question.
Yeah.
And get it on the record.
Happy to, happy to fuel them all.
Which buildings, not that it matters for the approval, is more of a curiosity? Which ones are, are you tearing down, I, in this picture?
Uh, yeah, yeah, that's the building, yeah. That building is the old Parket Sporting Goods building, um, which we've never, we own it now. I bought it last fall.
The yellow one?
Yeah, the yellow one. So that building's going to be coming down. So from what you see there right now, there used to be a house right in front of that. You, that's looking from Mechanic Street side.
Yes.
And we took that down, um, last fall, I think, and.
So is that White House going to stay?
Uh, yeah, that's not mine. If I, if, if, if we took that down, I think there'd be some angry people about that.
All good things.
No, I was just curious.
Yeah, so that building will come down and it'll be a, a, almost a perfectly rectangular lot. Completely used for parking.
You would own up to this building here?
Yeah, that building I own. That's my truck center.
And this building do you own?
No, that's, uh, Hughes Automotive. It's, uh, Open Door Daycare now. It used to be Jim Hughes Automotive.
Yeah.
As a matter of fact, the building that I'm tearing down, I bought from the Hughes, uh, Jim and Pam's Hughes.
The daycare in the apartment.
Yeah, correct. And then they moved next door into the automotive, they changed their automotive facility into a, a much bigger daycare center.
So between all your property, this White House is, then there's a brick apartment house also?
Correct, I don't know that one.
So those two are gonna stay there and you're gonna have the parking on the other side of those, going up beside?
Correct. And it's gonna be, so we'll have an entrance on Union Avenue across the street from Aroma Joe's, which I plan on having that chained off with like a plastic chain on just on carabiners, just to keep people from driving through. We'll access it from Mechanic Street side. Mechanic Street is much less congested, lot easier to get down most of the time. You can't get down Mechanic Street right now because it's torn up with construction, but, um, so we'll, we're gonna go in and out of Mechanic Street side. And it's right opposite my Collision Center parking lot.
Yeah, I, I just have one question slash comment. You have, how many parking spaces for your employees or perhaps some, some cars for your collision work? And presumably, you're gonna have a snow pile out there in the winter. How many employees do you plan on parking there?
Forty-two.
No more than forty-two.
No more than forty-two.
There's forty-two spaces.
There's forty-two spaces. I, and, and do they stagger in shifts? I know probably sales does. I guess my concern is, is on Mechanic Street, which is hugely residential. That, and this is a planning board issue and I apologize, but one of my concerns is, is that you're creating a lot of traffic during the time where kids are going to school from your employees going in and out of work, but that's not really a zoning issue.
It's the same number of employees we have now.
Well, it's the same number than, uh-
We're just shifting, we're shifting them from the lot on the main, the main lot over around and, so it's the same number of people. We're just asking them to put, see, by having this employee parking lot and parking over there, now that frees up more spaces for the customers that come in for service parts-
Oh, I see. Okay, all right. I, I-
And that opens up.
Okay, that, that makes it clear to me. Thank you.
I have a question.
Sure.
Have y'all considered, or through all these plans and modifications and whatnot, of unloading your trucks on your property and not in the street on Union Ave? Because I travel Union Ave a lot myself.
Yeah.
When they're unloading, I have to go into oncoming traffic and as we've become a busier city, it's-
And some of them park right in the turning lane, some of them park off to the, the new car showroom side. And it, it, it seems to be to the wishes of the different trucking companies. Getting the trucks into the yard is difficult because I have to back, back out into traffic. And I've seen them do that a bunch. It's amazing to me that they can do it. But, no, I wouldn't anticipate any change in the way they unload. Fortunately, there's three lanes there, including the churning lane. And knock on, well, there's no wood here, real wood anyway. We've never had an accident out front there, so-
Not yet.
Yeah. We've been, we, you know, we've been fortunate.
Now, I was just looking at this lot that's gonna go straight through and that might, uh, from, if they drove in from the Mechanic Street side, unloaded their car and exited on the Union Ave side, there wouldn't be any backing whatsoever.
Yeah.
You would have a straight shot.
I understand your thought and the, the thought makes sense until you actually, actually drive out into Union Avenue. The, the big brick building's on your left. It's really precarious pulling out of there and that's why we're gonna chain off that because I don't want even regular automobiles driving out into Union Avenue.
There's right on front.
Yeah, it's just gonna, yeah, it's just gonna add an extra layer of, um-
I had a question.
Yeah, problems driving out, so, so, and we're, it's just our employees, we'll be able to go in and out. The entrance on Mechanic Street side is gonna be twenty-eight feet, so it's gonna be in and out at the same time. And once the Mechanic Street, uh, construction is done, Mechanic Street is not a busy street, especially compared to Union Avenue, obviously.
Okay. Any other questions at this time?
I have one.
Go ahead.
The green space that you're talking about removing, it's already been removed?
No, so the green space, so we had it approved, the planning board has approved the plan without the center island. And the way the plan has been approved by the planning board, all the grass is on the Union Avenue side. If I didn't get the variance, then I would have to take grass out of the Union Avenue edge and take a portion of that and put it into the center of the parking lot, which I don't think the city would want and- Doesn't work for us. It doesn't, it doesn't work. It doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't fill the spirit of why the zoning regulations there. So.
I have a question. I don't know if I have this right as I'm looking at this here. So in between Union Ave and Mechanic Street, looking at this picture of the yellow house-
Yeah.
Is that a street that goes in between those two buildings? Is that Laurel Street?
Can I look at what you're looking at?
Can I just probably play with tax now?
Oh, that's a driveway.
Is it driveway? Do I have this right?
No, you're right. This, uh, yeah, so that's Hughes Automotive. That's the house I'm knocking down. That's the brick apartment building and that's a driveway that comes on.
Yellow house is being knocked down?
Yeah, correct. That house is being knocked down. And so when you drive in, that's the driveway we own right up to this part.
Yeah.
And then it goes straight back to Mechanic, to Mechanic Street. This will come out. We'll have a fence across the front there and then two posts-
Yeah.
With the plastic chaining to keep people from driving through. But for safety reasons, it can be carabinered off or you actually drive through. It's plastic, you know, for fire trucks, whatever.
Any other questions of the applicant at this time? There being none, I'd like to open it up to the public and ask if anybody from the public in Zoom land or in the audience wish to speak for or against this application. Please, in Zoom land, raise your hand or hit the toggle button. And for the rest of you, just please come forward and speak. Let the record indicate, no one from Zoom land wished to speak and no one from the audience wished to speak for or against this application. Therefore, we're bringing it back to the board. Any further questions of the applicant?
I don't.
I'm gonna ask this one more time. If I could ask Dean, is, is this Laurel Street? Do I have this right at all or I'm looking in the wrong spot?
Laurel, Laurel Street is a little further up Union.
A little further up?
Yeah, closer, closer to the Lakeport Square.
All right, I'll get off on it. Thank you.
Marcia? Any questions?
I have no questions. My floor was due, both comments, Mrs. Hayward.
Mrs. Hayward, how are you? Am I gonna get an A today? Because I'm not sure I got an A when I was in your class, so I'm trying to break that streak.
Any closing comments? From the applicant?
No, I just don't want to disappoint Mrs. Hayward.
With that-
We did enough of that years ago.
I'll close it to the public and bring it to the board for a discussion.
It, it's reasonable to me. I, I spent, my previous lifetime was spent in automotive and there's nothing more tricky than a parking lot. Other than starting cars in the middle of the winter, but we won't get into that. We're moving snow off them. So I, I have no problem with this. None, none at all.
Seems like a reasonable use of the land, you know, that sounds like they've gone through a bunch of, uh, presentation here with planning and I would like, you know, as long as all the lighting is within form of it, and I'm gonna assume that planning does their job. And it's all good with the neighborhood. I, uh, I support it.
Marcia?
No problems.
All right, like to entertain a motion?
I'll do it, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion that we, um, grant a variance to eliminate the, um, center island or whatever you wanna call it, requirement, um, interior landscape requirement from two thirty-five dash forty-eight G dash two, uh, six forty-five Union Avenue. The variance is not contrary to the public interest. It just isn't. Uh, the spirit of the ordinance is observed because there's plenty of space there and he has agreed to provide green space in, in a different location along the same site. And, um, the substantial justice, it, it does allow, I mean, it, there's no substantial justice here. It, it's, um, it doesn't violate the objectives of our zoning through that area, I guess is what I'm trying to say. It's consistent with the, with zoning that we have within that area. I don't know that it has any plus or negative on the surrounding properties. So that's really a non-issue and that, um, it's a reasonable, it's a reasonable request. Commercial paved lot is permitted by the owners and, um, these lots existed a long time ago. So there is no relationship between what the general public needs or wants, expects from a car dealership and the ordinance itself.
We have a motion? Have a second discussion of the motion. There being none, I'll call the vote. Marcia?
Yes.
Mike?
Accept it.
Roland?
Yes.
Gail?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Thank you, folks. Appreciate it.
Good luck.
Thank you. Was that my first A, Mrs. Hayward?
I'll put that in the minutes.
Can you put that in the minutes? I got an A.
You get the pass.
Thank you. I appreciate your time tonight.
You can get a hall pass now.
A hall pass, right.
Okay. Next on the agenda is application zero, zero, one, six. It's a variance on fifty-three Dartmouth Street. The applicant is requesting a variance from Article six, Section two thirty-five dash thirty-three, density to allow for three living units. The applicant, please come forward, introduce yourself for the record and-
Hi, my name is Stephen Luce Junior.
Welcome.
I have to go office.
Huh?
I have a business relationship with-
Oh, oh. You gotta recuse yourself. Okay.
I'm recusing myself in this one.
Oh, okay.
Sorry about that.
No, it's all right.
No, you gotta do what you gotta do.
I have to go.
You should probably sit out there.
You should probably sit out there. So let the record indicate that we have a four-four, um, board. Now, that sets in some special considerations here. In order for, for a pass to pass, for an approval to pass, you have to have three affirmative votes to pass. Okay, if you have a two-two vote, the affirmative fails. Okay, so with that in mind, because we are a board member short, I'll give you your option to continue to the next meeting to where you have a full board and then the vote works out three-two or something like that. Or you can continue tonight. Once we start, we won't stop and say, okay, we'll let you continue to the next one. So you have to make that decision and then we'll continue the meeting with you if you choose to be heard tonight. But you would need at least a three-one vote for an approval.
Okay, yeah, we can continue.
Okay. Let the record indicate it was explained to him and he chose of his own free will to continue. Okay, continue.
I'm looking to put a third, uh, unit in my building. It's a, um, two-unit now. It would just be a one-bedroom efficiency apartment. It's about four-hundred-and-seventy-five to five-hundred square feet. We haven't done any of the renovations yet, so just looking to get approval for that.
What section are you going to put this additional unit in?
It's gonna be the upstairs, uh, the upstairs front unit.
Not above the garage or is that already a unit?
That is already a unit, yep.
Now, what point does it go from being into a multifamily? What's the word? Because there's a changeover in the amount of units.
It's three more or is it four more? Three or more, okay.
So this makes it a multifamily.
So are we zoned for a multifamily? Is this, is asking for-
Yeah, he's in the RG zone, um, which does allow, let me just pull this up here.
Don't wanna create more problems for you.
No, it's all right. It's all right.
They are allowed by special exception. This is the first step would be the variance for the density. Because right now, it's only allowed two units.
So he would need a special exception also.
This is the first step.
So you would be coming back to us to get that changed to a multifamily. You realize that?
No, I didn't realize that, no.
Yes, that's why I ask these questions.
Okay.
Ahead of time so that once you, you go to two to three units, three unit changes your zoning, not just the density, but the zoning of your property.
Right.
So that's a separate issue altogether. So you got a density and then you gotta have a special exception for your multifamily.
Okay.
All right, so one doesn't automatically give you the other.
Okay.
Sounds strange, but-
This is the first step. If you don't get the variance, then it doesn't make sense to proceed with a special exception because-
Right.
So you need this first.
Right.
So even if you get this, I wouldn't start construction or anything until you got all the stuff that would be needed.
If we were to pass this, he's still got time to get it in for the next meeting, correct?
Okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
So I just think it would be good for La Conia to have another, uh, apartment unit available because, you know, La Conia is growing and there's more businesses in La Conia. There's more opportunity to find employment, so I think it would be good to have just another unit in La Conia. And it, it's not like it would be a two or three-bedroom unit. It would just be a one-bedroom efficiency apartment, possibly one to two parking spots at most. I have room for parking too, so.
That would be what, five parking spaces?
He would need five parking spaces. His driveway would measure by our nine-by-nineteen regulations to allow for six. Three-length and two-deep.
I just have a question. I drove by there. There are different addresses on the two. Is, is the garage in the back? Is that attached to the house?
No, no, it's only attached by a gutter.
Okay, and which one is fifty-three and which one is fifty-five?
Fifty-five is the front, fifty-three is the rear.
So you're seeking a variance for fifty-five?
For fifty-five, correct.
Okay, all right, because my, I thought-
We know the lot is fifty-three. It's, there's the fifty-three and the fifty-five are more of a postal address to separate the units. We know it is, one lot is fifty-three.
And this is all the fire department understands that these are at different addresses for medical reasons.
Right.
Obviously, if there's something else that goes wrong, you know, they can see the smoke, but I, for medical, for medical reasons, we, they have to know that these are separate units.
Correct. The, the fifty-three has already been, as far as I, I know, that has already been approved for an apartment.
And, and how many people live there? I mean, you have two residences now, right?
Correct.
Okay. All right, I just wanted to make sure I had my addresses correct before we start actually going forward with this.
Yeah.
And this is to take the upstairs. Are there two doors on the front of your main house?
Correct, so the left-
Was it ever an apartment?
What's that?
Was it ever an apartment up there? Why are there two doors?
No, the left door goes upstairs or I, I put a wall. As you go through the, the front door- As you go through the, the front door, there's a wall on the right-hand side. I just put that in there. I didn't... Just for, to, to, for the heat aspect of it, I didn't want to heat the upstairs in case I lived downstairs. And heat goes up there anyways. So the front door goes up to the upstairs apartment. The right door goes into like a sunroom. So that left door would, would be accessed to that upstairs apartment and not have a fire escape and a back window.
So has there ever been an apartment up there?
No, no apartment. Just, it's just three...
You'd have to put in a kitchen and a bathroom and all that?
Correct. Yeah, it's just three, it's just three or four bed, it's four bedrooms.
Upstairs?
Upstairs, yep.
I know it's a pretty good-sized house, so, you know.
Twenty-five hundred square feet total.
Okay, and one do, one apartment would be accessed through one door and then your home would be accessed through another door?
Right, there's a door down the side of the house, right off of the garage. It actually accesses the upstairs apartment too. They're separate, but they're on the same porch.
Okay.
So the staff, the variance goes to the lot fifty-three. How do we determine where this actual density happens? Because we don't describe that. We're just changing the density of the lot, but...
The lot as a whole is fifty-three. Fifty-five is an E-nine-one-one address that is just, it is simply for that, to separate the two units should there be a medical. It's all one lot. They're, it's like having an apartment A and an apartment B. It's, it's just they, they numbered them separately, fifty-three and fifty-five.
I've never seen that and I, I don't know why.
I drove by there today and I caught, it caught my eye that the back building has fifty-five on it and the front one had fifty-three. And I wanted to make sure what building we were talking about.
Right.
That was, that's the reason for my question. And you're gonna pull all your permits, right, before you actually do this?
Correct.
I know you've been sitting out there, so...
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
I went by the property today as well and I noticed that the parking area was already full of cars and there was a car on the street. So if you have another apartment, I, I really am concerned about parking.
So what, what...
I don't know how you're gonna have room for more cars when it was already loaded today.
So what I would do with the parking, one car, the woman that lives upstairs has two kids. They have two cars. One's going off to college. I have a fenced, I have a fenced area that's about ten feet wide and it goes to the backyard. There's entrances in the rear of the house and I would make that a parking area. Obviously, I'd probably have to get approval from the, the city to do that. But I'd open that fence and put three cars out back to clear that up.
Yeah, because the, if I'm facing your house or your property.
Correct.
On the right is someone else's driveway, correct? Where there's two cars that can park in.
Right, right.
Okay, and then I counted, I counted, if I counted the space out in front of your house, I counted four. I think, where I think I may be going here, although it's not a question for you, is this may need a minor site plan review if we choose to approve it, which is a more involved process. But if you're gonna add, start adding parking to the back, there's green space considerations. There's a lot more to this than...
If he gets through the zoning, he would have to go to planning for a multifamily.
He'd have to go to planning for a multifamily and then would that trigger a minor site plan review?
Though, to the planning board is more intensive than minor site plan. It would be the same, just more, I guess, intensive isn't quite the word, but it's in lieu of a minor site plan. It's a full planning board application.
It would be a full planning board application, okay.
And that's if he gets a special exception.
Right, there's, yeah, there's, the variance first for the density, which is what we're looking at tonight. That's this piece. If he gets the variance for the density to go to three units, the application will be due by the end of the week. You could apply for the special exception for the multifamily use. If you get the multifamily use, multifamily triggers a planning board application in the city of Laconia.
Okay, so it's an automatic trigger. It's not something we condition?
Correct, it's, it's...
Okay, I wanted to know that.
So on a multifamily, how many units are...
Three or more is considered a multifamily.
So to put three units, how much density are we giving up?
Currently, the lot is point...
Three.
Three, four acres, which would allow for two units.
Two point oh four.
Two point oh four.
And how much would they need to have a third one?
They'd need point five acres.
Another half acre, another quarter acre.
Point one-six acres. Just do the math backwards in my head.
I go, I, I, well, we're still asking questions of the applicant, right?
Yes.
Okay, and you just said that if, if you go forward with this project in its entirety and that includes apparently a visit to our planning board, which does more about site plans and things like that. But what I, you may, I, I, I'm concerned that you may trigger another variance request for green space because you already don't have enough green space. If you're going to add parking to the back of that house, that necessarily means that you lose green space, which may trigger a second request for a variance in which we allow you to have less lawn and, and green things and more pavement. I don't know where we are on the table of dimensions for that.
He's allowed forty percent lot coverage.
Because this is the first I've heard about adding parking in the back, but that's more of a...
So we'll exceed forty percent lot coverage?
Probably, yeah.
So we'll, he will exceed forty percent lot coverage. So with that, do you understand what that means?
So I'm giving up green space for...
Parking, because you said you were gonna make parking in the back.
Right, right, I would.
Okay, and that's where your lawn presumably is and you, the green space. What we call, anything without hardtop on it is, 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 is not green space. And there are requirements in our table charts that require that you have so much.
So, so they had a pool in the backyard. They got rid of that. They covered it with rock. I don't know if that, does that still...
Or is it porous? Can water seep through it?
Right, so that, that is still considered green space?
It's technical, but yeah, it's, it's a more of a...
You would find that your crushed stone and and gravel is not necessarily a permeable base.
Okay, that's, okay, it's, 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 it's defined by what is permeable and what is not. And that just means can water seep through it to get to groundwater or does it run off? And that is called that the planning administration will make according to what you do back there.
Right.
Okay, um, does anyone from the planning department want to help me out with this? Because this is kind of the first I've heard of additional parking in the back.
That's the first I'm aware of that piece. I'm...
Okay, all right, yeah, I'm not holding anybody up to, I, I just...
So what I would suggest is take the application tonight as it is for density. And then when we get to the special exception process, we'll, we'll go out and do some measurements. There are ways to expand parking and also keep green space, i.e. you could use some type of a permeable...
Permeable pavers.
Or whatever. So there, there's ways to accomplish this without, by providing extra parking, but at the same time maintains green space. So I, I wouldn't get bogged down in that at this point in time.
Okay, all right. I, I, no, I, that's kind of where I was going. Thank you, Dean. I don't, I don't want to open a can of worms for you that, you know, that you can always just let it lapse if it's not gonna work out for you. But, you know, I, I'm just saying that...
Any other questions of the applicant at this time?
No.
I'd like to open it up to the public and ask if anybody from the public wishes to speak for or against this application. Please in Zoom land hit your, raise your hand button. And if you're in the audience, you can come forth and speak at the podium.
Mary.
There you go.
Okay, Mary, can you hear us?
I can't, so I'm Mary Nye and I live across the street and I'm here with Ralph and Doris Fecto, who are also neighbors. It was just easier for us to all be on the same Zoom.
Okay.
Very well. Welcome.
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, could you introduce yourself once again, sir?
Ralph Fecto.
Okay.
And I couldn't quite understand what he said.
And we're having a hard time hearing him.
He objected, but I couldn't understand what, the reason.
I, I don't believe that it's an applied place.
Okay.
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 These extra cars.
Okay, I got it. Thank you.
So currently, there are four cars parked in the front. Three of them are on the grass on the front lawn. Those are the people who live in the back park, the back apartment. I don't mean to be an unfriendly neighbor because Mr. Lewis is a great neighbor, but there are a lot of cars inhabiting one apartment. So when the front house is inhabited by anyone, that's a lot more cars and they're already parked across the front lawn. And it could work right now if Mr. Lewis has a homeowner, but if he sells, there could be a lot of cars right there. There's residential apartments, another multifamily next door that has a lot of cars on a corner, which is a lot of cars in a very small area.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Mr. Chad, this is the one. You also have the letter in front of you.
I'm gonna read it.
Okay.
While we're waiting, I do have a letter from a Chad Valen Court.
He's actually there. I see a Chad. It's not a lot of Chads, we know.
Mr. in Florida, there's hanging Chads.
And Chad sent us a an email letter or something. And it says, "I am in a butter of fifty-three Dartmouth Street. I have some concerns of the applicant requesting a variance to add a third rental unit to the property. The neighborhood now consists of all one and two families, which are mostly all owner-occupied. There are currently no multi-tenant units in our neighborhood. I also live next door to a two-unit building, which used to be owner-occupied and since has been sold off for investment purposes. The property has become dilapidated and unkept. The owner of fifty-three Dartmouth Street may live there now, but it may not always be that way. We also deal with the occasional undesirable tenants in those units because there are no owners on site. I also do not believe there's enough parking spaces to have three units, which would require enough space for six vehicles. For example, the driveway next to mine surfaces only one of the two-bedroom units, but they have five vehicles for just one unit. In the warmer months, there's difficulty exiting my driveway because they tend to park on the side of the road, which obstructs a view of the incoming traffic. And when the parking snowban is in effect, the vehicles are approaching in my driveway and the sidewalk. I write these concerns not to personally attack the owner of fifty-three Dartmouth Street, but to only preserve the future and the consistency of the neighborhood."
Do we have a Chad? I don't know if it's the same Chad or not.
Chad.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, no, I, I wasn't sure if you're gonna read my letter, but yeah, that's basically what I wanted to say. I, I didn't realize carrying it's all the place and I know Mr. Lewis, he has lived in the neighborhood for quite some time next door. But yeah, like it says, you know, like the driveway where you'd want to put in would be in my backyard now and it's currently in use as a backyard on that property, so... You know, there's a lot of concerns I have with this. Like it says, not, not to be that guy or that neighbor. I just, you know, want to see it intact as is. Like it says, there's a lot of, you know, investment property out there and when someone else buys it, they tend to not put any money into, and still give everything they can out of it. And I wouldn't want to see a multifamily unit go in the neighborhood. It's mainly, uh, one, it's all one, two-family homes, which are usually owner-occupied, which they tend to take care of the, the property better. Thank you.
Is there anybody else, Dean? No. Let the record indicate everybody spoke, has spoken. And with that, I'm gonna close it to the public and bring it back to the board for further questions.
I have one other further question. Where are you gonna access this backyard parking lot that we're just hearing about? I mean, there's no space between those two properties.
It would be to the left of, as you're facing the building, it'd be to the left. And I mean, I, I respect Chad's concerns and also my neighbors across the street. I've been sort of on the fence with it anyways. Because due to the parking, the parking is limited, but to the left of the, and I, and I didn't even think about Chad, honestly, having three cars back there. And he has a, a nice kept backyard and to look at three cars, I totally respect the fact that he doesn't want to be looking at three cars. I mean, I'm almost thinking it's probably not a good move to, to do. I've got a good paying job. I can find a multi-unit somewhere else and, and just go ahead and do something like that. I was totally on the fence with it anyways, just due to the parking, so...
So you wanna withdraw this?
I, I think I, I think I want to withdraw it, yeah. I just, it's, it's too messy for the parking for... And, and that was probably basically, you know, just the parking is horrible.
Okay, so what your request is to withdraw without prejudice, this application? At this time, which means that if somewhere in the future and stuff, you would wish to reapply, you have that ability to reapply?
Yeah, I don't need to.
Okay, so with that, we'll... I'd like to...
Okay, the application is withdrawn and, okay.
Right.
Okay, it's been withdrawn without prejudice.
Yep, absolutely.
We don't need a motion on that, do we?
No, no, the applicant's withdrawn it, so...
No, I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
No, well, thank you.
Well, we appreciate yours and it was a nice idea.
Yeah, yeah.
Decision.
Yeah.
I just wanted to say one thing. Thank you for, for listening to your neighbors.
Right, right.
And it takes a bigger person to think of the bigger picture.
Right, right.
What's gonna unfold with all of this and thank you.
Yep, no, no problem, no problem at all. All right, you guys have a good night.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so with Roland, he's coming back, but Mike has arrived.
Yes.
We're going to...
Marcie?
Marcia.
Marcia?
I'll let Marcia stay on as a voting member. I'll just add comments tonight.
Okay.
I hate to come in late, but I just can't escape work sometimes.
Okay, you're still, Michael is here, but you're still gonna stay as the voting member tonight?
All right, thank you.
And I apologize for calling you the wrong name again. Forgive me.
Chalkboard at home for you. Five hundred times.
Oh, yeah.
I know.
And then we'll force you to listen while she drags her nails across.
Well, believe it or not, I used to have to do that a lot because of the word ain't. Ain't is not a word and I had to write that so many times. Ain't is not a word, and I had to write that so many times. Ain't is not a word.
I don't know, Faulkner made very good use of that word.
Okay, so Dartmouth Street, uh, withdrawn. All right, next application is zero-zero-one-seven V A R, variance of one-four-two Main Street. Applicant is requesting a variance from Article nine, section two-thirty-five dash fifty-eight, table of sign requirements that allow for additional signed square footage. Would the applicant please come forward, or if you're in Zoom land, indicates you're there, so the planning director can. Got him?
Dennis Greenwood. There he is.
Evening, ladies and gentlemen, can you hear me?
Yep. Mm-hmm.
Yes, go ahead.
Yes, my name is Dennis Greenwood. I'm an owner of Greenwood Auto. Uh, I am looking for a special exception to have more square footage for signage. Um, the Greenwood name is the lot's name and the state requires ten-inch lettering. I do currently have a four-by-eight side, uh, which is thirty-two square feet. Uh, I would like to pass it to the tenant on the property, um, right on the side of it. Now, the address is one-four-two South Main Street and the front of Oasis Gas Station is actually on, uh, Laconia Road. So I don't know why we have that address for South Main, when South Main is actually one-oh-seven. So, I mean, the only signage that he really has is the marquee sign. Um, it's been here for years with the store. There used to be a lot of signage on the face of the building, on the one-oh-six side of the building, um, you know, and he has, he has done away with a lot of signage. Uh, it, it is hard to, you know, run a business with such a small sign. Uh, and I know what you're saying, it's a construction company that busts up with a small marquee sign that is right on one-oh-seven. But he is, uh, in a lot of retail business, they got in the automotive business. He is a construction company and he doesn't have customers coming to go in, you know, and he's in a sandwich business. Um, you know, we, we're deciding how we're trying to, you know, promote good business and try to sell reasonable cars to the people of Laconia. Um, you know, I know there's a lot of expensive places there and we're trying to clean the whole lot up. I've done a lot of cleaning there, uh, you know, we're trying to take care of the lawn behind the building. There's a lot of garbage there. We've taken most of that out. We have a little bit of, uh, lumber left there, uh, that needs to be removed, but, uh, we just put in a nice walkway today. We put in shrubbery. Um, and the shrubbery that's there, uh, in front of the shed, we'd like to put the signs in between those shrubs. So, I mean, it's gonna be hard, but if people actually can see it from the road, you know, when you have the tech on the parking lot, the, uh, parking lot, it's still gonna be hard to see. So I don't know if there's been any complaints or anything from the neighbors. Uh, we did put in the parking lot lighting and that was all approved by the planning board. Um, we hope that the neighbors, uh, okay with all of that. Uh, the only thing we have not done yet is we have not done any dumpster. Uh, we have moved the dumpster, but we had a pro, uh, property line issue with the glass company. I spoke to the manager of the glass company and he said that the edge of the pavement was his property line. But after doing some research with the, uh, tax assistance office, we find that the property goes right up to his storage container. So I don't really know and I don't wanna open up a can of worms, but, uh, you know, once we know where the dumps are gonna be permanent, then we're gonna spend a five hundred dollars to fence it in. Uh, and that's about all that I have to say. I did, uh, you know, fill out the application. Um, I did submit a picture of the sign that I would like to use. And, uh, you know, I had to hurry up and run down to the sign company and get the temporary sign so that I could all of it, as state requires that you have a ten-inch lettering sign. Uh, that's all I have for the moment. If there's any questions from the board.
Mr. Chair, if I could just clarify so that you have the, 'cause the devil's always in the details.
Yes.
The lot is, because of the size of the lot, allows for fifty-seven square feet of signage.
Okay.
Currently, with the one existing, it's a pre-existing non-conforming sign of sixty-four square feet. So it is currently non-conforming. He is requesting to add a thirty-two square foot sign on the rear side of the property. Currently, that, where the gas station is, the sign is to the, to the one-oh-seven side. He is proposing from his map, the sign be on the one-oh-six side, where the auto dealership was recently approved by the planning department. So he's requesting an additional thirty-two square feet above and beyond the sixty-four that's already there. Fifty-seven is what would be allowed by current regulation.
Is this sign got, this is not an illuminated sign?
No.
This is just, and he's putting it on the building, or is it freestanding?
Freestanding.
It's freestanding, but.
It's just like a wood laminate.
It's, it's not freestanding. It is a metal sign that's gonna be passed through the building.
Oh, it's a wall sign. I, my apologies, I thought it was on post. It's.
Is it gonna be, I, I know the sign itself won't be illuminated, but will there be light shining on it and will that?
No, no, no lighting at all.
Okay.
You look like a man with a question.
So, this is actually putting two signs on the, uh, property.
It's not the number, it's the square footage that's the issue. He could have the second sign. It's that they're only allowed fifty-seven square feet. Currently, the one freestanding sign that they have for the gas station is sixty-four square feet. So they're already existing, pre-existing non-conforming, because they're over by seven square feet. So he's requesting to add an additional thirty-two square feet, which is one sign on the backside of the property.
So we'll almost have a hundred square feet of sign.
Thirty-two, you'd be, yes.
So, does he own the property?
He is the agent, he's an authorized agent. L A Three Kings LLC is the actual owner of the property. And if you look at the front part of the application, he's the authorized agent for this application.
Yep. So with this, this runs with the property?
Correct.
So what we're doing is allowing the property itself to have a hundred?
It'd be an additional thirty-nine square feet above and beyond what's currently allowed.
Right, approximately a hundred.
Yeah, yeah, just under.
Okay.
Well, my, my way of thinking is that, you know, one sign is on one-oh-seven, the other sign is on one-oh-six. Um, one of them will be based in one-oh-six, I mean, one-oh-seven only. Um, and actually, the one-on-one-oh-six is the same thing. Uh, you know, it's, it's a, uh, marquee sign that's been there since the building was put in as a gas station. Uh, so what I'm asking is for a signage on the back of the building to increase the one-oh-seven sign.
The, the property, to clarify, is at the intersection of one-oh-six and one-oh-seven, where they come to that V with the gas station in the middle, so.
I live in the neighborhood.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think you, yeah.
My, I'm, I'm just.
That's one-oh-seven.
This is one-oh-six, and that's one-oh-seven.
So with this, I'm, forget the business altogether. We're just looking at a sign expansion. I don't care that there's a business there or not.
Right.
Right.
Okay, so what I'm looking at is if the auto sales goes away, then the gas station gets a free thirty-nine square foot sign.
They would have an additional thirty-two square feet for the, for the property, yes.
For the property, so they can use it for whatever they want.
So you make a special exception so that it would be used for the car lot business only? And if the car lot was ever to leave, that that signage would be voided?
I don't know that that's legal. That's a First Amendment thingy.
I mean, I understand what your business is looking to do and I would be doing the same thing if I was sitting on that side of the camera, but, uh, I just got some questions I gotta run through my mind. Of all the possible differences that will go along with this. Okay, while I'm chewing this up in my head, anybody else has any questions?
This, so this, this is what he wants. He's got a sign on the one-oh-six side. He wants a sign on the one-oh-seven side.
He doesn't have a sign on the one-oh-six side. The gas station has a sign on the one-oh-six side.
His car lot is on the one-oh-seven side.
His car lot's on the one-oh-seven side, and he wants to have a car lot sign on that side.
He wants to have a car lot sign on that side.
But the property itself has already exceeded the maximum sign. So he's looking for, the property is looking for, let's clarify what we're doing. The property itself is looking for an additional thirty-two square foot sign so that they could advertise X, Y, Z. Greenwood Auto, doesn't matter. Because it rides with the property and that could be X, Y, Z, so.
They would be regulated by ordinance to a maximum of three signs, just so, just so you have that piece of information. So if for some reason the automobile dealership went away, that thirty-two square feet, they could, conceptually, two signs of, you know, sixteen square feet or, you know, but they would be max three signs by ordinance.
Or they can have another thirty-two square foot gas station sign.
Correct. I, I, yeah. I, I guess my, my feeling on this is, is that the uniqueness of this particular business is where it is. I mean, that to me, if there's an unnecessary hardship, it ha, it, it's where it is. It's not necessarily, he, he needs, he wants signage on both access points because he's between one-oh-six and one-oh-seven. And I can, and you're right, Steve, I can absolutely understand that. Um, and I'm wondering if that, and to me, that, that is the definition of a, of a hardship, is that the, the shape and the location of the property as opposed to.
Well, we can discuss that.
Okay, well, I'm.
At that part.
And it's not gonna be illuminated, right, sir?
No, not illuminated.
And are you changing, are you gonna change the existing sign to do anything else?
Yeah, that's all coming down.
That's coming down, and what's going up in that spot?
Nothing.
He's referring to the temporary banner. He has a temporary banner so that he was allowed to open by law. That temporary banner would come down and he would replace it with the, the four-by-eight sign. But as a point of clarification, Mr. Chair, just, just so you're aware, the current existing sign is actually in the state road right-of-way. So even if the applicant will take, say the automobile dealership goes away, somebody wants to come in and put a new sign, it would have to go to the rear side of the building regardless because the front portion is actually in the road right-of-way.
Who do I wanna send it to?
Anybody.
Siri's trying to help.
I, I am, I am confused now. And this, what's on this lot now is a sign that says "Gas and Go"?
Yes.
Correct. And it's right at the cusp of the road right-of-way. The state road right-of-way on that side cuts really, the front portion of the building is actually in the road right-of-way.
This sign is coming down?
No, the six, the sixty-four square foot sign is there. That's the gas station sign.
It's staying.
It's staying. The sign he was referring to taking down is his temporary banner that he has on the one-oh-six side currently.
And what they want on the one-oh-seven side is a sign like that?
It's the one-oh-seven side, I'm sorry. Yeah, correct. Mr. Greenwood has a temporary banner on the one-oh-seven side for his auto business so that he was allowed to open. He, it would be replaced with the sign that Mr. Bogart just showed you.
Okay. Any other questions at the moment? There being none, I would like to open it up to the public and ask if anybody from the public was to speak for or against this application, please either hit your Zoom, raise your hand button, or if you're in the public, please come forward and speak. Let the, let the record indicate, God, I hate motorcycles. Let the record indicate that no one from the public or Zoom land wishes to speak for or against this application. I'll bring it back to board for further questions.
I, I think I got a handle on it.
There being no further questions to the applicant, do you have any closing comments?
Not at this time.
Well, this is the time or not, so I'm gonna close you off and you have no more time, so. All right, so you're done? Okay. All right, with that, I'm gonna close it to the public and bring it to the board for discussion. As I was contemplating all this, like I said I was, uh, thinking about the different avenues, in a sense, this would be, to me, and it's up to debate and discussion, um, if I had a, a two-unit, two different stores, or you take over by Dunkin' Donuts where they got the, the three out-parcel units or whatever you call it, strip mall or something, there would be three different signs there and stuff like that.
See what you're seeing.
Uh, you take the other larger strip mall down by Canton's, uh, you know, they have to have multiple, uh, discussions. I mean, multiple signs and stuff for the different businesses that goes in. So I guess in a sense, to me, this is similar to the same thing. You having one parcel with multiple businesses online trying to, unfortunately, it's after the fact. Well, it was never a two-business partial, so that's why one sign all this time. And they found a way to, able to make money by adding in a second business, either by leasing the land or whatever, which doesn't matter, it's a second business. And the best I can do is they need to have signage to express their new business.
Um, Mr. Chair, what would you consider the hardship to be? I've already stated my opinion on what I think the hardship is.
Um, I think the hardship in this case, along with what you've indicated, also the fact that it's now a second business on the property and the main sign that's on the property is a, a, uh, non-conforming sign already of excessive size. So in order for them to have any sign whatsoever, because currently they would not be allowed any sign, if I'm correct. So they would be allowed zero sign due to the fact of the non-conforming sign that's on the property now.
Okay, and the.
So that in itself, to me, seems to be a hardship if you're trying to run a business without a sign. And the other part of the hardship would be, to me, is that the state requires you a certain size sign. And if I'm wrong in that, please indicate.
It says ten-inch lettering.
So that's a state requirement. So there's two parts of that hardship there is, A, it was all used up by the main business and so the. A, it was all used up by the main business and so the alternate business doesn't have any sign available. And the state, in order for them to run their business, the state requires them to have a minimum structural sign. And I guess that's thirty-two square foot would be the minimum to accomplish what they're doing.
Yes, if the ten-inch lettering, which is, that the photo is there, it's, it's the bulk of the sign.
So that to me would be the, between the state regulations and, and the. The current sign on the thing and them needing a sign is a hardship, that would be my interpretation of.
Okay, okay, um, I, I, I see what you're saying, I'm gonna let you make the motion, but what does Mike have to say?
Well, as I see here and look at the pictures and understanding this sign thing here. I'm looking at this one pedestal sign that says gas and go and gives a price maybe on what it costs. Gas, drink, food, that's a pedestal sign. Now, on, this is on the, uh. One oh six side, and on the front of this building here in this picture, there's a sign, I'm not seeing any printing on it. But there's already a sign on the west side of this building above the door. That being counted here as a part of, and then we're going to put another sign, which would bring us to our three. Out on the, uh.
I'm not sure.
On the one oh seven side, but it's there in the picture, I don't know.
I'm looking at the, is this the little picture or?
It's the, uh.
It's a tax picture.
Tax map picture.
Oh, okay, all right.
That is showing something there already mounted on the side of the. Wrong side, but.
If I can offer clarification, reviewing the file, there used to be a sign there, the, the owners were sent a violation letter that you can't have the second sign. For this exact reason, so they removed the signage, they just left the frame there. If they were to put a sign up there without coming to see you, they would again be, they would receive another violation notice. And I have recently driven by just on, on another inspection, that is an older photograph, but the, the condition is the same, it's still just a white.
I'm sorry, I, I don't see where. I, I'm, I, I don't see on anything that I have, I see the request, I have the. Assessing information, building layout page.
There's a bit there, that picture.
Yeah?
Right here.
The white spot.
The white, oh, the white, oh, okay, it was white, okay, never mind, you don't have to get up, I see it.
I'm missing it.
Right here. Is that gonna come down? Can I ask a?
It's already. They took the sign down.
The signage is out, that frame's been there for years, blank like that, they just left the frame. With no, with no sign in it.
Can I ask the applicant one question if he, about this? Does he intend to take this down?
It's not his, that's the gas station, that's a separate owner.
Okay.
So is, the gas station is leasing him the space for the car dealership, is that what I'm assuming?
Yeah.
If he sold him the property, would he have the right to have his own sign?
If they sold the property, the gas station and everything's all on the same property, so that's what I was discussing.
Sold half the lot, let's say, if he sold.
Have to split it.
Right.
And then that lot would be allowed without a variance to have their own sign.
Okay.
Okay.
If I'm not mistaken.
It's start, yes, I, it's starting to get clear to me.
Separate piece of property.
Right.
You know, I wonder, can we consider a smaller sign, a three by six instead of four by eight?
The state is requiring him to have ten-inch lettering.
Right.
Which is gonna dictate the size of the sign due to the name of the business and stuff. That's why there's partial hardship involved.
If it were Bob's Cars.
Yeah, this, a lot of this is out of our control, if we're gonna give him a second sign, it's where I'm seeing it.
I didn't want to interrupt, um, with, with somebody else asking a question, I don't want to interrupt them.
Nope, well said.
Okay, um, the, uh, the gas station sign is a non-conforming sign. My question is, what happens if, let's say, the gas station were sold to a new owner? Does that mean that that non-conforming s- size stays non-conforming forever?
Forever and a day.
Forever and a day?
Yes.
Things never go back to conforming?
Only if they take the sign down, then they would have to add a building permit and then. I'm not sure what that triggers in the planning department side, so.
They'd have to replace it within a year.
But that's why I think, I think, and I'm looking for clarification. That's why where you see these places with empty lots and a signpost sitting out front. Is so they don't lose their rights to the sign and the sign size. So there's, there's a lot of that that happens.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know, thank you.
So what are we thinking? Now, go over your hardship.
My hardship is just that. The building itself and the property itself is on two roads. And he, and, and he's in a dilemma where one road already has their sign, but he doesn't have a sign on his side. It may not be convenient to put it, with the configuration of the lot, where it is and what it is, is probably not space for another sign. I mean theoretically, we could give him a variance to use that white frame to put Greenwood Auto. And not give him a variance to do it on the other side.
But his.
But that's not what he wants.
His business is not inside the main gas station.
I understand that.
So to put that.
He's on the same lot.
Right.
And the location of the lot is to me, partially, and I agree with your other things, is what's driving the hardship here. Is that. It, it's, it's where the lot is and, and. And the fact that we've added a business. And then of course the state requirements for the basic whatever we need for a sign, that.
Their size of the sign, yes.
So that's a double hardship.
And in this instance. The hardship is not the property.
Which the use of the.
So can that be a hardship, it's actual, the requirements of other things that are driving.
That's a good point.
Be a hardship?
If you look at criteria B, if the criteria in the subparagraph is not established, an unnecessary hardship will be deemed to exist. If and only if owing to special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area. In this case where, uh, you've referred to both frontages, that would be something that would distinguish it from other properties in the area. Majority of the properties have a single road frontage, this has two, which is what you've referred to as a distinguishing characteristic.
Okay, and then what would stop it, Karen, for argument's sake? What would stop any other business locating on a corner?
They could request the same.
They could make the same request, okay, so, so the idea that this has just got two frontages. And he happened to buy a location on, or rent a lease of a location on the other side. Is, is his particular immediate hardship.
Karen, let me ask, is, where does the fifty-seven square feet maximum sign size come from? Is that the size of the lot?
Length of the front of the building times one point five, because it's in the commercial zone. So you take the thirty, uh, excuse me, forty, hang on.
Thirty-eight?
Thirty-eight times one point five is fifty-seven.
So I'm thinking part A of a hardship. Cause you can do A or B, and I'm thinking A part probably satisfies. That because it's the general public per- purposes of the ordinance provision and the specific application. And the relationship between the two, because you have state regulations that are kicking in and, uh. The only reason why I'm discussing this is just in case, you know, i- is, is. If there's ever reasoning, then we have discussed it.
And I guess my question is, is can we condition this on there being two separate businesses on that lot? In other words, what's to stop in the future, if we don't condition this. Going to your original argument, that somebody has two signs for one lot and one business. I mean, this Greenwood Auto could go out of business in a month, uh, you, do you know what I mean? And, and then that gives cash and that gives the, the, the front business two signs. So can we condition this?
Twice as much as what they're allowed.
Uh, was twice as much as what they're allowed if what we're doing, so can we condition this on that as long as two separate businesses. Are operating there, then, then they can have this, but if that business goes out of business. I don't know how to condition it to an owner, I, 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 I'm, I'm at a loss, Dean, so.
No, I, I think, I think would, you can do that, you can make that condition. I think that would be a wise thing to do because the next business may not have the requirement of the ten-inch lettering. So therefore they could potentially have a smaller sign.
Yeah, or it could all go into one business and we'd get enough extra signs, and that's.
I, I think, A, you could, you can, you can add that condition, and B, I, I think that's probably a good idea.
Okay.
Okay. So, do we wanna make a motion?
I'm still looking at you to make this one. Unless Mike wants to give it a shot.
Mike's not on, not voting.
No, Mike what?
Oh, Mike.
We got two mics, we're a two-mic board.
I'm sorry.
My cousin, Mike.
We're a two-mic board.
All right, I'll go ahead and make the motion, so we, let's move on. The variance is not contrary to the public interest as. I'm gonna take my mask off so I can speak.
Clarification, it's a motion to approve?
A motion to approve.
Okay.
The variance is not contrary to the public interest as it is in a business section of town, leaving town and. And, uh, on that two sections of the road split between one oh six and one oh seven. The spirit of ordinance is being observed in the fact of the special conditions of the property. And of the current sign that is in place is a non-conforming sign. Eating up a lot of the square footage that would be available if there was a, another business. For another business to be on site. Substantial justice is being done because we're able to expand property and, and provide some relief. For the, uh. Second business to be able to conduct business and fulfill all the state requirements of signage for that business. The value of the sounding, surrounding properties are not diminished based on the fact that it's already a businesses. Are in place there and, and, uh, it's, what is that zoned?
Commercial, it's a commercial.
And it's a zone for a commercial type enterprises at the moment. Unnecessary hardship, I'm gonna go the route of A. There is no fair and substantial relationship between the general public purposes of the ordinance. And the provisions and the specified applicant of the provisions to the property based on the fact the state. Requires the auto dealership to have ten-inch letterings and based off of the name of the business. And achieving those ten inches, uh, require that thirty-two square foot sign. And the second portion of that is the fact that you already have a, uh. Non-conforming sign on the property, which is, uh. I think they said sixty-two.
Sixty-four.
Sixty-four square feet and the new sign, additional signage would be thirty-two square feet. And one, two, three, four, five, covered all five. Okay, the special, uh. Conditions for this would be, this sign is being, uh, made available for the auto dealership only. If that business goes out, then the, uh, ability to have the extra sign. Also, uh. I'm not sure of that nice word, Gail.
Goes away?
Two words, but that'll work. Goes.
Sorry, it's been a long day.
Like a sundown clause?
Yeah, I was like, yeah, well, it's not really a sundown clause, because that's conditioned only on time, but.
So, and is there any other thing I need to condition to make? Okay, so we have a motion.
I'll second that motion.
We have a second, discussion of the motion?
I guess that, I, 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 the motion is the motion, I, I guess I just don't understand why we aren't making. The owner of the property take down, put up a conforming sign.
Cause it's grandfathered in.
Oh, okay, never mind, okay, go ahead, sorry.
I guess we never said that, did we?
I, I should've figured it out.
Was said, but in a very roundabout manner.
So, we ready to vote?
I, I guess I am, yeah.
Marcy, Marcia?
Yes, accept.
Mike?
Yeah, vote to approve.
Roland, approve. Gail?
Yes.
Steve, yes. Okay, you got your sign. All right, moving right along at hyperspeed. All right, next application is zero zero one eight S E, it's a special exception, thirty-three Clearwater Place. Advocate has questioned a special exception for Article seven, Section two thirty-five seventy. Subset two to allow short-term lodging, would the advocate please? Come forward and tell us how we may help you.
Good evening, my name is Sarah Rhuberry, who was part law in Laconia. I'm hoping that Gary Melville, uh, my client will also be joining us, um, but I'll certainly get us started. So as you can see in the application, uh, Mister Melville is a member of D and E Clearwater LLC. Which is the, the technical owner, um, who transferred the property into that LLC about a year ago, um, after he purchased it. Um, I think the fact that we're fairly straightforward here, submitted in the zoning application. And of course we submitted the short-term lodging planning board application, um, simultaneously. And so that would be, that pending as well. Um, this property was used for short-term, uh, rental rentals and a variation of, of rentals. Uh, by the prior owners for at least five years, uh, before the ordinance was enacted. And it was marketed as a rental property, that's why Mister Melville bought it. Um, he does all of the marketing, um, and rentals through a local agency. He has, um, a little bit of two cents, he has, um, that local agency, um, in Laconia. Ready to, you know, be on standby managing property issues and anything that, so he basically just wants approval. To continue the use, um, in the manner that it has been for quite some time.
Okay. Do we have proof other than this letter that this property has been used as a. For this type of. Short term?
I do not have any other proof available at this time, if the board has something in particular that they, um, you know, would like to see. We can certainly, uh, do our best to provide that.
Rental agreements work, uh, state taxes being paid works. Uh, anything along those lines works that show that there was actually some kind of transactions being performed. That makes this happen?
Sure.
Okay, and. Cause that's gonna be the basis of the whole thing in the beginning. So, uh, without that type of information, I would suggest that we, uh, move this to the next meeting so that we could review the documentation and stuff and see what's what, okay?
Sure, yeah, uh, unfortunately, the client was not available, uh, or was not aware of, um, this ordinance until fairly recently, um, and has some rentals lined up, so I'm, I'm just wondering if the board would consider.
No ma'am, no ma'am, I'm sorry, but no, we can't. The ordinance and all of this stuff has been available and we've been doing this for well over a year now since it's been enacted, so it's been in the public, the realtors and everybody involved should know this already. So, uh, I do apologize, but I, the board here is all saying no, so.
I understand.
Okay?
Okay, thank you for your time.
All right, so the motion is to move this to the next meeting based on if we have the appropriate information provided by the applicant.
Okay, do, did we have a motion?
I just made.
You, you're making the motion, okay.
I'll second that.
We have a second. Marcy, Marcia?
Agreed, agreed.
Thank you, Mike?
Agreed.
Roland?
Agreed, yes.
Yes, Steve, yes. So that'll be moved to the next meeting, you can put that at the top of the agenda for that and if she needs more time, take it, uh, we're not, if, we're not trying to, to harm you. So if you're not ready for the next meeting, we can push it to the next meeting. I'll leave that up to you and whenever you have the information available, okay?
Understood, thank you very much.
Thank you, have a good night. All right. Drum roll please, last one. Variance zero zero two zero, variance fifty-six Washington Street. Applicant is Western variance from Article six, Section two thirty-five dash thirty-four minimum lot frontage to allow for the subdivision of a lot. The applicant is here, please come forward, introduce yourself for the record and tell us how we may help you.
My name's Arthur Boudreaux and, uh, I'd like to get permission or whatever you do to, to, uh, make, uh, a lot out back of my, uh, my, uh, land. It's a hundred thirty-two feet by hundred twenty by hundred thirty-two by hundred and twenty, but it's only, uh, like, uh, sixty-six frontage on a church lot. And I have a deed of right of way, which you probably have there already to go on to it. And I would like to see if I could get that so I could make that into a house lot. Come up Madison Street and then there's, I got the deed of right of way sixty-six feet right there touching my land, that's the church parking lot.
I have a question. Does having a right of way to the main property? When it's subdivided, does that right of way automatically go? Or does another agreement have to be made because the original deed will not be the same anymore?
Good question.
So that would be a secondary deed and then in fact, will it give the right of way to two deeds versus the one deed?
Yes, well, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No.
Could you expand upon that?
I can't, no. So the, the easement, uh, is on the church property. And if you create this lot, the easement will still be on the church property. Nothing is changing about the easement. The easement just states that it can be used by this property to, to, for, for access. So the fact that you're creating a new lot here, I don't think changes anything from that standpoint. The, the easement is saying it's, it's, this is where the easement is and this is what it's to be used for. We're not changing any of that. The, the only, really the only question here is you're creating a lot that does not have frontage on a, on a street.
Or does it?
Well.
We had a conversation, Dean, I wanted to say, you're just, Dean and I had a brief conversation about this earlier today and he and I, I don't know if you got a chance to get out there, Dean?
I did not get a chance to get out there, but I, I.
You know what, you looked at the map.
Yeah, I looked at the maps, there, there is no, no indication that Madison Street ever went beyond where it does right now. Now, it may have, but there's no indication.
Yeah, years ago, years ago, it was supposed to go right over.
It was supposed to, right, yeah, and it's, you know, and it, yeah. But I mean, I think the key point here is that there is a deed of easement right of way here that can be used for, I mean, there, there may even be enough land there to create two additional lots and you could use the same right of way access if you chose to do that, I mean, you know, I, I'm not suggesting that at all, but, uh.
I was thinking that, yeah, I mean, over here.
Yeah, maybe, we'd have to look.
Where, where would the new lot be? Would it, would it come off of Madison at the backside even though I know Madison doesn't, uh, extend there? Do you know where we're talking about, Roland?
Yes, it's just up the street from my house.
It's what?
It's just up the street from my house.
Okay, well, I guess.
Not in the butter.
The line just goes, just imaginary.
No, I understand that.
Madison Street line just continues up and that's the, gonna be the new property line.
I think I don't want to complicate this, but what I am concerned about in this is not necessarily a hardship, um, at this point. I am worried about public safety, fire, et cetera, as far as accessing a back lot without frontage. My suggestion to Dean was could we actually front this on Madison? Which would give it a hard address, but that's a public works decision and I don't know how that works. And he was gonna look into that.
Yeah.
Madison doesn't extend to that.
Well, that's the question, can it be extended and at whose expense and?
It's a parking lot now.
Yeah, I mean, it's on, it's on, it's owned by the diocese.
It is.
Not anymore.
Or was, was.
He'd be seen now.
Yeah, it's the, the other church now, but anyway, um, under this application, you're not extending Madison, however, I think it's very likely that that's an address that, that, that nine-one-one would use because that's the logical access point.
And, and that's, that's my concern and whether or not that is, I, you explained to me that once, if we approve this subdivision, that it will go through the planning process.
It will.
And there may be a site plan review and in that site plan review, which will bring all of the city players to that, they may decide that we're gonna give this a new address, that's not really our concern.
Correct.
That's the city's concern.
Correct.
I just wanted that to be explained because that's my concern is it's not a lot of frontage there.
We'll go to planning board, it'll be reviewed by, among others, DPW and FIRE, they will assign a new address.
The problem is on the Washington Street side, which the, the, the house actually fronts on Washington Street.
Yes, it does, his house now.
And the parking along both sides of that street, Washington Street, is terrible.
I know it is.
It's, uh, in fact, I have trouble getting, going up to get my paper in the morning sometimes uh, because of the number of cars that are parked on both sides of that street, right in front.
And, and that goes to part of my public safety concern and those are the things, and I, I want to be assured as we go forward. And Dean assured me this afternoon and I am comfortable that the planning board is going to review this. The planning board can always say no and they can say this just isn't possible without a purchase of a property, without creating a new road, without doing this. Is because you're right, parking, I, I mean, parking could be at the back, but I, I'm saying this is a site plan restriction. It's not a zoning decision, we're really just deciding whether or not, and as it stands now, I'm not comfortable with it. I, I, I agree with you, um, and I'm just wondering if, if, if the planning department could address that, I know exactly what he wants to do, but.
So i- i- in terms of, of, of this regulation of requiring street frontage.
Right.
The, the primary goal of requiring street frontage is to control density.
Yes, okay, all right.
This case, he is proposing, you know, you, you have one very large lot for that neighborhood and he's proposing to subdivide it, but both lots will still meet all the requirements of the zone. You're, you're not creating a density issue from a standpoint of, you know, a, a small lot or a non-conforming lawdering like that, everything is conforming except for it doesn't have street frontage. So the, the point is to control density, I, I don't think you have a density issue here.
I don't think you have a density issue either.
I think any new structure built is going to, it would be, the only logical access point is off of Madison so therefore, you know, you're not affecting anybody else, other than Madison, obviously.
And that's a, that's an administrative and a planning board decision and not our decision. So we're just basically determining whether or not the density in this particular area is going to be affected by that. And the planning board could dictate that he has to build access off of Madison if he wanted to at his expense.
Who's gonna plow the different, uh?
Well, that would be a city problem, I'm just saying that.
It'd be a city problem, it's not the city, that's not a city street.
Well, I'm saying that they may make him, they can expand the street, they don't have to do it at their own expense is the argument. They could do whatever they want to do, this is the planning board. I, I, this was a concern that immediately jumped out at me when I went to the back of Madison Street to see what was behind there, there's plenty of space, we both know that, it's a big wooded area, he's right, he could probably put two lots back there.
But you're still looking at only three quarters of an acre, the whole lot.
Okay.
But it's not like it's twenty-five acres.
No, 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 it's not like a twenty-five acre lot, but I, I'm only making a point that I wanted to be comforted to some degree by the planning department that if this were to go forward, that it would get a site plan review by the planning board who can say, no, we're not gonna do that. The public, but, public direct, public service director can say, no, we're not gonna do this. Um, and for health and safety reasons and that's what gets to the variance is are we creating a potential safety issue with the parking? Because we don't have any guidance yet on what happens on Madison.
But that's on Washington Street.
Other problem is you want to make sure that, that there's gonna be a fire at the new house.
Well, that's.
Out on a Sunday morning because that parking lot is filled on Sunday mornings.
Yeah, they use three parking lots, they have three parking lots.
They use that parking lot, so that's not just parking, I just thought that was a dead area. I did not realize that that parking lot was used by anybody other than the folks that lived at the end of Madison.
The church.
Well, I, yeah, okay, the church, whatever it is.
Yeah, because the warranty, the, after reading all this, they're still gonna maintain the right, the church to travel. Through here.
They have three parking lots, they got one here.
That's, that's.
They can't extend the road because the city don't own the land.
That's, yes, and that's part of my concern and then there's so little access down the front.
Madison stops here, all this is private property with just an easement. That, so the entrance of this property would be on an easement. And that's why I was asking these questions, how do we, it's not even open on the road. The entrance to the property would be an easement.
You'd need another curb cut, the whole nine, well, I don't know if there's any curb there, it's all pavement pretty much, but.
As far as the, I was, you were saying the, uh, uh, the street being all blocked, but that's, that's Washington Street, that's not here. I mean, nothing would be blocked down there, you know, except for church and they do, very seldom parkway down there. They have three parking lots, I go to the church, you know, so they own three parking lots. So they pretty much pack all the way down by the gym and across the street and here too. Up, up at the top, people don't want to walk all the way up the hill, you know, down the bottom.
But, but that's legal, that's, that's just, that's esoteric, that's not what we're trying to avoid here doing, Artie, is that we're trying to avoid creating a public hazard by adding an entrance on and off of Washington Street, which is very busy.
It's not on Washington. No, no, they don't go on, no, Madison Street, Madison Street. He would, he would come to the end of Madison Street, the driveway would start right here and the house would be here.
But the address is still going to be fifty-six Washington Street.
This would be Madison Street, Madison Street, this lot would become Madison Street.
So that would be Madison Street.
Yes.
As long as that's gonna happen, then I'm good with it, I, I, I mean.
I don't see a problem with it.
Look at the other lots around here, how small they are.
Coming up Madison Street.
This lot is a beautiful lot.
Oh, it's a, it, it is a beautiful lot, I just wanted, I'm concerned with the access. That's all I'm concerned with is the address and the access.
The address would be a Madison address.
I believe, sir, this is kind of.
So the address would be a Madison act.
The driveway would just enter right here at the corner, the lot, come in, the house would be there.
Then this is what I want, this is my concern, Roland, I, I, Dean has addressed it.
Extend this here.
How does that get to be a Madison address?
That's Madison Street down there.
There's a gate at the end of Madison Street, there's.
I drove through there, but I didn't notice that.
And, and so here instead of here.
Yeah, you know, just to make it more.
It's an easement, Madison Street stops here.
Okay.
And then it goes on to an easement.
And that's not, is that part of the easement?
Physical entrance will be an easement.
Yes, it would be, yes.
Is that part of the easement that's on?
Madison.
The address would be Madison.
Right.
It was not going to be Madison Street. It's just an easement, it remains an easement. And as part of the subdivision process, we would be notifying the church, obviously, that, you know, the neighbor wants to subdivide and we would make it clear to the neighbor that the easement is there and enforceable and needs to be kept clear. If they're using it for anything right now, they would have to stop doing that, it would be like any other easement.
Not by the deed, they don't have to stop doing anything.
Well, they can use it to drive over it, but I'm saying they, 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 they would need to leave the easement clear so that.
He could access the driveway.
He can access the driveway.
Um, well, I don't think they're gonna care for that too much since they put an elevator in there for, uh, people who are, have difficulty walking and they're not gonna be able to walk from like he said, down to the other parking lot, down to the end, lower end of the street.
Well, that's not.
No, what I meant is, the parking lot itself goes down like this, so they're not gonna be walking up by Madison Street. They, they don't, they park way down by Madison Street, they park up.
Right, because that's where the elevator is.
Cause, uh, they don't want to walk up the, you know, from Madison Street out.
Think, Dean, my suggestion at this point in time, I have a quick claim, Dean, with an easement, I'm not a lawyer. Does that easement include access off of Madison?
Yes.
It does, so you've, you've, and, and that's, that's my concern is as access and public safety. I, 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 I'm not even really wigged out about the, the hardship, I, I can, it's a reasonable request because it's a good sized plot of land we're talking about, we just don't have any frontage to get to it.
Right.
And there's potential of frontage on Madison, but that, and if that's part of Mr. Boudreaux's easement, then that's a different animal, if, do you know what I mean? He doesn't need church permission, it may be inconvenient for the church, but if the, if, if, he doesn't need it, he's got an easement.
He has legal standing to use.
He has legal standing, if he, and that's why I said, has this been run up the flagpole of our lawyers? Because I, I want to know for sure before I grant this.
But I, I put on my junior lawyer hat to, to register the easement.
All right, well, I used to play junior lawyer too.
I have been, you know, doing this a little while now, so, you know, I, I did pick up a couple of points.
I do know that, I, I'm just concerned about, about this for the reasons that, that he has.
He has perfect legal right to use the easement.
Okay, it says right here in this deed, this right of way and easement is also given subject to the condition that the holder of this easement shall not, except for the temporary construction purposes, block or limit the rights of the guarantor or of his prisoners to travel over the easement area for the purpose of access to or egress from Madison Street and for the purpose of parking on the easement area, provided such travel. Street, and for the purpose of parking on the easement area, provided such travel or parking does not unreasonably interfere with the holder's reasonable rights of usage of the event area. So that's, is what you're saying, covers.
Yes.
So who determines what's reasonable and unreasonable? I, you know, I'm not the lawyer, I'm just trying to make sure we're not creating a headache for a new property owner.
Yeah.
By saying that they can build a house, but they can't get to it.
We're not telling them they can build a house, we're only subdividing the property.
I know. That's coming, that.
That, I, I'm aware, or sale, you know what I mean? Mike? Yeah?
That's all I'm concerned with, is.
Well, and, and I'm concerned with safety, too, but Mr. Foot had something he wanted to say.
Yes.
I'm curious, because I don't see in here, do you have an idea of where you're gonna subdivide it?
Yes.
Am I not seeing it?
You're not seeing it, because there's a pencil mark.
Right on the, right on the block, then.
Yeah, right on the block, it looks like that's where they made, it's a nice clean lot and everything, I'm just.
Oh, do you have a map, sir?
Yeah. Yeah, I, I, yeah.
I mean, I don't see one.
It's a beautiful thing, and I just.
You're funny.
Tell me, could I be smarter than the tool you're using?
I'm hesitant for the same reasons you are, Steve, but I think we're voicing them differently.
Yes, it, we're saying the same thing.
We're saying the same thing.
I'm just.
Because part of our mandate here is to consider public safety, and, and I, I don't know if we're over-stending our boundaries or.
Or maybe we're making it more difficult than what it is.
And, and I, I think we're gonna, I, unfortunately, I think this proposal, although I can't say, it's probably gonna cost him a lot more money than, than, than the money he recouped from the sale, but.
Something like this, Steve, driveway would just come in here, have a building, it'd be a beautiful spot.
Oh, we all know, it's possible.
No, I agree, this, I'm just more concerned, because that stops there, and this.
People are gonna park and block his driveway.
This is all.
It's gated, but he has an easement, and that's.
It's all, yeah.
The city, the city plows, goes down the church parking lot and comes down Madison Street.
That's a turnaround for them.
Yeah.
So, I.
I know the thing, sir, if you notice where Madison Street comes up, and I, it's sixty-six feet here, I could go another sixty-six feet onto my property, that gives him into the property at a, you know, longer way.
No, I, my, I think the way you're trying to subdivide it is probably the most appropriate way.
Sixty-six feet?
Yeah, making that a square, like you did, is probably the most best use for the property. It makes it the easiest for the boundary lines and everything like that. My biggest concern is, was the easement and how that works out, and Dean seems to think that that is copacetic, and it goes before the Planning Board, and there'll be time at that point for them to work out the legalities. We have a Planning Board member sitting here amongst us, so.
Thank God.
He, he'll have the ability to, to look at those questions and stuff, so I.
My only concern is, is without answers to those questions, we are creating another access point on Washington Street.
No, not Washington, Madison.
Madison.
Madison, and Washington Street's up, way up ahead, they're in.
Oh, yeah, well, and that's behind.
Washington Street, too, if they're coming through the parking lot, they're going to that back lot.
No, I see that, I'm saying that right here is, is, is what I was thinking, is the only access point, because you're right, this road doesn't extend there, this is gated right here, see this line right here? This is a gate.
Like, so that's where they'd be coming up.
This is a gated thing.
The gate would have to be removed.
It would be removed or open, they always leave it open, anyway.
So the only other way to access that is down Washington and to come through there, next to.
That's not where the easement is.
No.
The easement is right along the, the current property line.
Up Madison Street.
The easement that's used, that would be used.
Okay, all right. And, and like you said, this is going in front of the Planning Board, and, and the Public Works and Fire Department, everybody's gonna weigh in on this, and the church has got, they gave an easement, so I'm good with it.
All right, let me open it up to the public. Is there anybody in the public wish to speak for or against this application? If you're in Zoom land, raise your hand, and if you're in the general public, please come to the podium and speak your piece for or against the application.
Yeah, Margaret.
Margaret? Can you hear me, Margaret?
She has to unmute.
Margaret.
There she is.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, I'm sixteen, Madison, I'm in the new, the neighbor of the new house.
Ah, face guy.
I was just wondering, um, where, I'm looking at the little map, and I just want to know, where is the driveway going? I don't.
Of Madison.
Because I thought Madison Street ended with me, I'm just curious.
You're the last house on the left on Madison?
Lot twenty-five.
Yeah.
Okay.
I was just curious, where is the, I, I'm confused, like, where is the driver gonna be, just out of curiosity.
Well, from what I can understand and gather, this is not the gospel, until it's said so, but I guess there's a gate right there at the end of that property? That gate would be removed, and then at some point, on to the left, just past your property, there would be an inset cut into the property that would allow for a driveway to go in off of that area past the gate, and please, someone, if I'm incorrect. So it, it, all that's gonna do is add another mailbox, you won't be the last house on the road anymore, you'll be next to the last house.
Yeah, all right, I'm just curious, just wondering, but yeah, I don't have an issue, just wondering.
It sounds like a good plan to have a good neighbor?
Yeah.
Nice lady.
Don't mind.
They already do.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're more than welcome, you have a good night, ma'am.
Cheers.
Okay, anybody else from the public? Let the record indicate, no one else from the public wishes to speak for or against this application, we bring it back to the board for questions, and Young Michael.
Who controls the gate? Who has the gate?
The church.
The church?
The church, yeah, but they leave it open all the time.
No, I'm just asking, if it was the church or Public Works, I didn't.
No, it was like, the church, the Catholic Church had it there, because, you know, they kept it closed, but they keep it open all the time, EBC, because the city goes right down, drives through and plows all the time.
Okay, any other questions? Any closing comments, sir?
Oh, no, thank you, sir, thank God this person was here tonight, it was a blessing, you know, to make it look right, you know? No, that's it, sir.
All right, you may have a seat, we're gonna close it to the public, bring it to the board for discussion.
I've said all I needed to say, and I'm comforted by the fact that this is gonna go to a full.
Another set of eyes.
Another, there's, there are many steps.
Yes.
Before this becomes a reality, and.
This is step one.
This is only step one.
Okay, like to entertain a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Oh, bless you.
I'm, um, I propose that we grant a variance from the lot permit, lot frontage, to allow subdivision of a lot, right now, appears to be on fifty-six Washington Street, because granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest, it would, you know, there is no real public interest down there, other than the lady that spoke, it just adds a building lot to the, to the, a center of the area. The spirit of the ordinance is observed, because it's, it's consistent with the neighborhood, it's not out of, it's not out of line with what the neighborhood already is, which is residential neighborhood with, with lots. It'll do substantial justice, because it doesn't really affect the zoning in that area. It's a, it's a wasted lot right now, to be honest with you. If the, the values of the surrounding property would not be diminished, in fact, it would be a nice lot, and there, there's no fair and substantial relationship between the general public purposes of the ordinance and the specific application of this ordinance to that particular property, okay? And the proposed use is certainly reasonable, it's a wasted lot, it, you know, so it is reasonable.
Okay, we have a motion?
I'll second that motion.
We have a second, discussion? There being none? Marcia?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes, accept it.
Roland?
No.
Yeah?
Yes.
Steve, yes. Okay, it passes four-one. All right, is there anything Planning would like to share with us?
I'll make a motion.
Anything the board would like to share with Planning?
No, I just want to thank Dean and Karen once again for all their hard work, because we had some tricky wick, sticky wickets before us tonight, and they were able to my satisfaction to answer everybody's questions.
All right, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, everybody, yes. Good night.